Chapter twenty-six of the Mobley City Code, certifying the cost of abatement and directing the city clerk pursuant to section twenty-six dash two in twenty-six and section twenty-six dash six to cause a special tax bill to be issued thereon.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance, please?
She'll move.
A motion and a second, roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubik?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion has been approved, I'm sorry, the ordinance. Number eight, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to six-one-three Adams Avenue within the city limits of Mobley, Missouri. I ask it to be read twice for consideration of passage.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first reading, please.
An ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to six-thirteen Adams Avenue within the city of Mobley, which required nuisance abatement by the city of Mobley pursuant to Article one and Article two of chapter twenty-six of the Mobley City Code, certifying the cost of abatement and directing the city clerk pursuant to section twenty-six dash two and section twenty-six dash six to cause a special tax bill to be issued thereon.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance accepting and approving the report of the Director of Community Development relative to six-thirteen Adams Avenue within the city of Mobley, which required nuisance abatement by the city of Mobley pursuant to Article one and Article two of chapter twenty-six of the Mobley City Code, certifying the cost of abatement and directing the city clerk pursuant to section twenty-six dash two and section twenty-six dash six to cause a special tax bill to be issued thereon.
Thank you, any further discussion from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance, please?
She'll move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubik?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted, thank you. Number nine, a resolution.
Mayor, a resolution of the city of Mobley, Missouri authorizing the Mobley Fire Department to accept a fire prevention and safety grant through the Missouri Department of Public Safety to purchase a fire safety trailer, asks it to be read once for consideration.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first reading, please.
A resolution of the city of Mobley, Missouri authorizing the Mobley Fire Department to accept a fire prevention and safety grant through the Missouri Department of Public Safety to purchase a fire safety trailer.
Thank you, any further question or discussion? Mr. Vagowski, could you tell us just a little bit about this thing and what, what it is and what it does?
Yeah, I'd have Deputy Chief Dutton come up and address you all about this as well, but basically, it's a really unique tool that we can use to local schools and area civic groups to teach about fire safety. This particular one has a lot of interesting features, and I think it's going to be a really excellent tool for the city and the department.
Okay.
So basically, what it consists of, twenty-seven foot trailer enclosed, it's going to have a bedroom, it's going to have a kitchen, every prop inside there is interactive, we'll be able to take it to the schools, take it to community events, get the kids involved, and it's also eighty-eight foot wide as well, so they'll be able to partake in that situation too. So, smoke's coming from the doors, a little bit of heat, we have an infrared extinguisher that's going to put the fire out, captains are going to catch on fire and create this really unique experience for these kids.
It's really neat.
Yep.
Yeah, good idea.
It's great.
Good idea, anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, I believe we've had our readings, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
She'll move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution has been approved. Number ten, a resolution.
Yes, Mayor, I have a resolution, a resolution recording the destruction of certain local government records, asks it to be read once for consideration.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first and only reading, please.
A resolution recording the destruction of certain local government records.
Thank you, any further discussion from council? Nope, hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the resolution.
She'll move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, resolution has been approved. Number eleven, a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the Treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between September eighteenth and October sixth, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of one million fifty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents, and I ask that it be read once for consideration.
Thank you, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first and only reading, please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the Treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between September eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, and October sixth, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of one million fifty-eight thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars and forty cents.
And I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Mobley, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution, City Treasurer Allison Boyd. Any further discussion on number eleven? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
She'll move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution has been passed, thank you. Okay, under the heading, anything else to come before the council? Number twelve, consideration to reappoint Robert Dutton to the Fire Prevention Board of Appeals.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at work session last meeting, we talked about Robert Dutton for the Board of Appeals. He was appointed to that position in February twenty-twenty-four to fill an expiring term. That term expires this October, so he has applied to be reappointed, and the council moved him forward to this meeting for consideration.
Very good, anyone have any questions regarding Mr. Dutton for Mr. Vagowski? Do we have a motion for the approval of the appointment?
She'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Mr. Dutton has been approved for the Board of Appeals, thank you. Number thirteen, my favorite time, public comments. If you filled out a green card, now is your time to shine, so you will have four minutes to address the council. So, I thought you said some, you'll have four minutes to address the council, make sure you state your name and your address when you come to the microphone, please speak clearly, and we'll let you know when your four minutes is up. If you were not here in the beginning, if you do need a green card, please come up and grab a green card from the clerk here as well. So, I believe there are a few that want to speak, is that correct?
We have Steven.
Okay. Please state your name and address, sir, please.
My name is Steve Croucher, I live at five-twenty Monroe Avenue. I moved to Mobley in twenty-seventeen. I became a resident and moved my business here in twenty-twenty-three after COVID, I closed my business and sold it due to financial hardships because of COVID. I have called the Mobley Police Department over sixty-five times in my residency. I have yet to have a follow-up from any officer that responded to any one of those phone calls, either by nine-one-one or local, as to a resolution of the issue or anything. I've had a resident who lived in the upstairs of the house that is split into two apartments, threatened me and arrested and, and got evicted and threatened to stab me with an American flag and my Marine Corps flag and called me a [BLEEP] and threatened me that she had people who were going to get me. In the last five years to seven years, there's been a group of seven to ten young men who race around our neighborhood and specifically in front of my house, push their clutch in and race their engines and flip me off. Last Wednesday evening, I was mowing my grass, I called law enforcement, two of the gentlemen tried to hit me while I was turning around from mowing my grass at the edge of the street with their vehicles. I still haven't heard of anything of that resolution either. I think there needs to be some sort of extreme transparency with the police department about children between the ages of sixteen and twenty-five driving in the city of Mobley, and how reckless and dangerous they are in residential neighborhoods, it's grotesque. It's all fun and games until somebody gets hurt. Every weekend, we have to listen to somebody doing a burnout Brody in the East Carpenter Baptist Church parking lot. And I've actually had a police officer tell me, it's okay, they're not hurting anybody, they're just kids blowing off steam, not cool. And this city needs to do something about it.
Okay.
The second thing I wanted to talk about is the city, its employees, and the way we do business in the city. I've had city employees come onto my property for thirty-eight minutes and use my utilities and vandalize my tap-out cleanout to video sewer main in an alley that has collapsed three times since two thousand seventeen. Not cool. And then I got told by the city, I was a liar, he was there for less than five minutes, wasn't very pleasant to hear, and I actually had a Ring camera that showed him there for thirty-eight minutes on my property. The second thing is the use of city vehicles. The speed limit on any surface street-
One minute left.
The surface street speed limit is forty on US twenty-four, it's thirty-five on business route, not fifty, not sixty. I've seen city employees doing fifty-eight miles an hour today between Coates and US twenty-four, smoking cigarettes on their phones, smoking cigars, all of which are violation of city policy.
Sure.
Lastly, but not leastly-
Well, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to cut you off on that one, because we're over time already, but I do appreciate you bringing this to our, to our attention, you're more than welcome to come back and speak to us at any time. But we've got, we've got a few items that, that, you know, we'll look into here, but we appreciate, appreciate the information that you provided.
Can you forward me your physical office address and email?
I can for, yeah, I can forward you anything you'd like.
I've heard my email address.
Sure, sure, absolutely. Thanks, sir. Okay, do we have one next?
Yes, Kenton Lewis.
I have, Kenton Lewis, and I live at, come here, uh, sixteen oh-two, county road twenty-two ninety here in Mobley. Uh, let's see, Saturday night, I went to a local establishment to partake in supper with my family. He is, I'll give you this. He is federally registered-
Thank you.
As a service dog. And this restaurant told me I was not allowed in their restaurant, and I would tell you exactly what he said, because he goes to his wife's-
Yeah, we've already had a little bit of that, let's, let's keep it PG, please.
Oh, I, I, but he's, I got PTSD, so he's certified to be with me everywhere I go. I've got, also, here's his car, but the owner of the restaurant said he absolutely would not accept. And I'll tell you who it was, it was the Coates Street Corner Bistro.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to have their license revoked.
Okay.
Because I've got a daughter that's got epilepsy, and if she were to have, her dog will take her to a spot, set her down, and he absolutely refused to let either one of us in that restaurant. And I said, these dogs are certified, they're certified, they're federally, they've got their own number, like their own social security number, and he refused to let us in there, he said no, I went to Mobley PD, filed a report, uh, it's going on to the ADA Commission, I've got an attorney out of Columbia that's going to deal with this, so I'd like the city to step in, because it's on report with the city, and I'd like them to do something about this restaurant that flat out denied a service dog entry.
Okay, I understand your frustration, and, and we've taken note here, I don't know that I see the city revoking a, a business license because of it, but, you know, I would, if I were you, I would maybe seek legal counsel, which is probably what you've done.
But, but my question is, is they violated every ordinance and every code and every law within the state and the federal government, he's federally protected to go anywhere he wants.
I don't think in our code, our codes that we-
I'm willing to review our code of ordinances to see if any were violated, there might very well be some federal statutes that were violated.
But don't you fall under federal statutes too?
We don't enforce federal statutes, we enforce city code.
So how will I find this out?
I, I, the mayor suggested that you seek legal counsel, which you probably should do.
Will, will the city get back to me and let me know what, what their decision is?
Sure, I'll review the code and get back to you.
Okay, because, I mean, if, if my daughter were the head of a seizure right there, what would, what would have happened? I mean, that's her, that's her lifeline, and this dog has never caused a disturbance anywhere, many people have seen him, and, I mean, he sat back there and he probably didn't even know it was here unless he seen him walk in with him.
Sure.
So.
But we appreciate you bringing it to our attention, obviously, we don't know when things happen in the community like that unless you do let us know, so.
Wouldn't you forget that?
We do appreciate it very much, sir, thank you. Okay, is that it, or we have any others?
One more, Don Burgett or Burgett?
Don Burgett. Right, sir, please state your name and address, and you'll have four minutes to address the council, please.
Don Burgett, Mr. Mayor, council members, eight-two-five West Coast Street, uh, obviously here in Mobley. I want to get a application or permit to build a fence on three adjacent empty lots that total less than half an acre. My wife is hoping to build a miniature forest, put up one of those educational signs, like to see it apart, telling people about eco-therapy and how all the nature stuff, she knows more about that than me, I apologize, but something about all the pollinators and the birds and butterflies and everything helping with nature and eco-therapy and, anyway, she wanted to put a fence around it to protect it from some of the neighbors that are somewhat unruly. I'm sure the police department are quite well aware of the neighbor that I've been referring to, but anyways, I was told that I needed a petition for a variance to get a fence, which would be a hundred dollars instead of twenty dollars for a, a permit for a fence. I read Article seven of your city code, and I see, oh, I was told that the variance was required because I had to have a structure on these lots to put a fence. And reading Article seven, and I read slow, I don't read, I don't speed read like my wife, I just, I read slow and deliberate, and there was nothing in Article seven talking about fences that said anything about a structure being required. So I was hoping maybe somebody could get back to me on whether or not I need to file out that petition for variance or just get a building permit for a fence.
Sure, we can, we can review your request, and we can have someone get back with you and let you know, you know, what we, what we find. I'm not particularly familiar with the actual code itself, so I'd have to research it and, and make sure, and, and, you know, talk with staff, and have you, have you talked with staff now?
Yes, I did.
And, and what were you, what were you told?
Uh, actually, I, I, the only person I talked to was, I don't remember his name, it wasn't Tom Sanders, uh, he knows of the situation, but I, and I probably should have went to him directly to ask instead of coming up here for this, but there was one other matter that I was also, I emailed Mr. Sanders about this other matter, because he told me how to go to the city codes and everything, look up. On West Coast Street, the parking, according to city codes, there's no parking from, I want to say Johnson Street, whatever street the post office is on, all the way down to Brinkerhoff on Coates, there's no parking on the north side of Coates. There's only two signs in that section, and people from roughly, I will say eight-oh-one, because it's the first house, soon as you hit that eight-hundred block, there's a sign in front of her house, and nothing afterward, and people just park willy-nilly everywhere, makes it kind of difficult trying to drive a slalom, and especially if emergency vehicles were to try to come through there, especially at the corner of Brinkerhoff and Coates.
Okay.
There's a, a huge sink area, they have cones, so I'm assuming they're going to fix it at some point, but watching buses try to turn while there's a white SUV parked there.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay, we'll, we'll make note of it and ask staff to review and see if that's something that we need to be doing something about. Thank you for bringing it to our attention at both, both issues, and we will, we will get back to you on those and let you know an answer, you know, on what we find, and appreciate the, the info, so, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, anyone else would like to address the council at this time? No more takers, okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and we will go directly to work session.
She'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned from the normal council meeting. We will move directly into tonight's work session agenda, and we'll start with number one, total response protocol implementation and service agreement for dispatch operations. This Shelby.
So, this is an agreement for our EMD software, our law enforcement dispatch, and our fire service dispatch. As you all saw in front of you, the funding, some of that is coming from the commission opioid funds, some of that is coming from the same Mobley opioid funds, and then some of it's coming from the budget, and this was a approved budget item. Do you guys have any questions?
Didn't you guys have any questions?
Yeah, question. Shelby, could you just kind of walk us through how this works, I'm just more out of curiosity, I'd like to, just, nine-one-one call comes in.
Yep, so a nine-one-one call comes in, they say, you know, they're having trouble breathing, we go in there, we put breathing problems, it prompts questions that we're going to ask, as such as age, sex, if they are alert and breathing, those types of questions, and then it's going to lead us into pre-arrival instructions that we can then provide to law enforcement or fire or EMS to try to better get them a picture of what they're walking into. If it's a bleeding call or something, we can actually get the caller to control that bleeding, we can provide the, any type of pre-arrival instruction as far as the bleeding stoppage, or how to give Narcan or anything like that, which is where this opioid money come into play.
Cool.
Okay.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Is this a, is this a, a one-time, or is this yearly?
So, this, this is, the sixty thousand dollars is, it's about two thousand every year after that, and that is also going to provide training to the dispatchers, it doesn't matter if you have fifteen of them that go through the training, or if you just have one that goes through the training, it is going to be the same cost, but it does provide, I can't remember how many hours worth of continuing education, and then every two years, they have to recertify in this, so they basically made a site license, so you pay a certain amount of money, and you have access to that twenty-four-seven every, every year, so that it actually saves money, because the other time, if you are trying to get them certified, it's about four thousand dollars, or four hundred dollars a person per certificate.
Okay.
So this two thousand is for everybody to use, and that is annually.
Okay, yes, Mr. Kimmons.
Shelby, does this system record what's being said back and forth from the person calling in to?
So, our call recorder does, it does do the mouse clicks, so it does record your mouse clicks, and then there's actually QA-QI software, so quality assurance, quality improvement, that you can use to then go through and actually score them so that you can improve that, so.
Super, thank you.
The, I didn't realize that we- The, I didn't realize that we got opioid funds. We, th- those came direct, that were, they didn't come from the county?
No, those came to us directly. Cities could sign up and we did years ago. Um, they get a much smaller portion than the counties. Um, but that is what we got.
Very good.
Mayor, I have one more, sorry. I noticed it was sixty thousand versus another bid of two hundred thousand, is that correct? And are we comparing apples to apples on that? It's the same?
We are. It's the same software. Licenses are a lot more expensive with that other software than this one. Um, but you're getting the same quality. They both come with their own medical director as well that kind of oversees those questions. Um, and then if you change them, that's where our medical director and then they actually look over those calls to make sure that we're following the protocols as well.
Sounds like a good, good piece of, uh, equipment for what we're trying to build. So, uh, any additional questions for Ms. Creed? Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to number two, report of the Director of Community Development for abatement charges for six properties.
These are kind of lumped together. These are six properties that we've done administrative cleanup on. I think you've probably seen pictures of them before we started. Before and afters in the past. You can see they range considerably from ten, almost eleven thousand dollars, put one of them down to about fifteen hundred. But most of them are in the two to three thousand dollar range. That's the cost of, uh, in many, some cases, we use outside labor. Most of the time when we had staff available, we use staff and inmates to do the cleanup. And then demolition charges are, excuse me, though. Landfill fees are usually a big chunk of that as well. Asking to put those six on there.
Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? We'll move this one forward. Number three, uh, report of the Director of Community Development for demolition charges for one thousand two Con- Concanon Street.
This is one of the ten houses that were, well, eleven now were changed order houses. We've been taking down here recently. Uh, bill was, you can see seventeen thousand, three forty-seven thirty-five. We thought that they were, the owner was interested in making that payment, but we haven't seen that in the thirty days. So we're going to have him requesting to file that on the tax bill, uh, getting that on there. Uh, a, a large chunk of that, that one had, you look on the bill to break down there, that was about four thousand dollars, I believe, in asbestos fees. It made that bill a little higher.
Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Okay, hearing none. Any objection to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move that one forward. Um, number three, no, number four, receipt of bids for a mini excavator. Looks like we received several bids.
Yeah, we were just like to say, the, the low bids were for a Kubota. We had an eighty thousand dollars budgeted. So the low bid was from Sourcewell for Kubota, seventy-nine thousand, seven sixty-two fifty-five. However, the Caterpillar three oh-five from Altorfer was eighty-one, four thirty-one and being a local entity, um, you know, with a five percent discount or, or advantage they have on that, it was under that. However, the, the staff recommended for that based on some of the features that the Cater- they had a, they had the hydraulic disconnect on it already is part of it. Um, and you're gonna add a, you can bump the warranty up to five years, thirty-five hundred hours versus the standard two-year, two-thousand-hour warranty for another five hundred and fifty-six dollars. So based on the features that it has and the, being the local group, the staff has recommended the Caterpillar and adding the extra warranty up to the five-year, thirty-five hundred hours for five hundred and fifty-six dollars for a total price of eighty-one thousand eight, or nine eighty-seven.
I know, I, the, the line, the bottom line, there was an eighty thousand budgeted for this. And however, we had a final lease payment for tandem actual dump truck hit this year's phys- fiscal budget. Is this, does the funding available include that last payment? And is this gonna throw us, throw us way off by?
The payments already come out and that's why our number is low in that line item. So the dump, the dump truck is already reduced. So we were actually going to pay for this up, lump sum and we were gonna finance the crack sealer. But what we're asked to do instead is we're gonna finance the crack sealer and this piece of equipment. So it'll bring that total impact on the budget down to what we can handle this year.
Is this a piece of equipment that you feel like is gonna be used a lot?
We use, we have right now a, uh, fifteen-year-old, twenty-year-old, five ninety K backhoe that we had. It's a, it was a hand-me-down from the utilities department. So we had looked to use piece of equipment. And so, I mean, we were seeing, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars for one that was worn, very well-worn. So give us some features where we can add like the flail mower and some other things that we can use in a lot more roles than just simply excavation. But I think we'll use a lot and small enough, it's easy to transport around town.
Sure, okay. Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Nope. Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward. Thank you. Number five, change order number four, Sparks Avenue Lift Station Force Main and Sewer Extension Project.
Yes, this change order is for, like you said, Sparks Avenue Sewer Extension. This is for the west half of the project. Um, it's overrun zone, backfill and concrete, as you know, Sparks, that whole area from there up to where we're doing the new detention basin is a swamp. Uh, we dug up sixteen-foot tramps through, through that street, you know, and, you know, pretty much the street collapsed on one side of it, which is why we moved it to the south half because we anticipated the north half. Happening with the water line under it and the whole water, oh, the abandoned water line collapsing the whole street. Every, every parcel on this street got a new sewer lateral that didn't exist before. So every, everyone, so every, every parcel you had to quit across the street on, that caved in just like the, uh, the main trench or the main line did require, you know, pretty much double on the base rock and the concrete throughout the project. So that's, that's where we are. This, what this, what this change order covers.
Pretty, pretty significant numbers.
It is pretty significant, yes. I, I've been letting Sean and, and, well, we all went through, went through the street part of it. So, you know, kind of been letting him know that it was, that it was coming. So there wasn't much we could, we wish the storm, the stormwater project may, would have came first. It could have possibly helped with what they encountered. But, you know, we got a significant amount of rain this spring and summer, which did not help. But just that road's been sitting on wet condition since it was built. What's under it just wouldn't hold up. Good news is, is they're gonna pave it this week, though.
It's gonna be open. That's what you're saying, right? They can drive as fast as they want. Okay, any questions for, uh, Steve regarding this change order? No questions? Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward. Thank you, Steve. Uh, number six, Seven Bridges Road, C S O Basin Upgrade, Arpa Grant Project.
This is phase two for the Seven Bridges Lagoon Upgrade. The ph- phase one was, uh, the removal of over three million gallons of sludge from the lagoon. Phase two will be with Emery Sapp and Sons. And that will be to remove the existing fence, essentially raise the berms all the way around, about three foot for flood control. And then, uh, to rip wrap the entire basin from the toe of the slope to the top of the basin for, for flood, for, for essentially for flood and erosion control. And this project is, you know, I think this is all one hundred percent funded by the grain.
Very good, very good. Any questions regarding, uh, this project? Nope. Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward as well, sir. Thank you. Uh, number seven, proposed change to late fee structure for utility service.
So we've had some questions, um, recently about late fees, um, from citizens. And then also just in reviewing what our process has been over their, over the last essentially year, eight months. Um, about, um, what late fees we charge and kind of when they're being charged. So currently, we have the ten percent penalty being charged on the day after bills are due. And then we do have a thirty-dollar fee that I think historically started out as a turn-on fee. And over time, it turned into a service charge. So it's just not very clear what it's being charged for. It's being treated like a late fee. Um, I am proposing changing the ten percent to twenty percent and eliminating the thirty-dollar fee. That way, it's kind of based on usage rather than just a flat arbitrary thirty dollars. Um, to simplify it and make sure that it's, it's a, it's a transparent true late fee, not just a service charge. It's a little bit more unclear.
So is, is this new late fee charged the day after it's due?
That's what I would propose doing. Um, I think it would help be a little bit of an incentive to get people to pay, um, by the late, by the due date. Instead of some people do wait until the late fee, the thirty-dollar fee was charged. Um, so I'm hoping by increasing that a little bit, it would cut down on the number of door tags we have to do by incentivizing people.
Yeah, I agree with that. Man, cut down on manpower and having to, yeah, those door tags. You know how I feel about those. Okay. Think that's smart thinking. Um, anybody, anybody have any questions? No? Anything you else you wanna add to that?
I think the other part that I had in there, um, was changing the language or removing some language about the timeframe for turn-ons, um, turn on and turn off. Um, there's a whole section, I think, in the code about after-hours turn-ons and, and who to call and the timeframe for that. And in the time that I have been here, um, I don't know when the last time we did after-hours turn-ons are, but we do not currently do that. We don't have the staff for that. Um, and we don't really have a way that we could take after-hours payments anyways because we don't have staff in the office. So, um, I'd also like to just kind of clarify that, take that out so that, that we can have something to clearly point to on what times we take payments.
So ultimately, if you, if you're late and your water's turned off and you, you get home at seven-thirty or eight o'clock at night and you realize it's off, it's off for the night ultimately, just to clarify, correct?
Yes. Our cutoff is usually four-thirty. Um, if we get the payment by four-thirty, well, we get somebody out there. But after that, it's just the, the time of when staff quit working for the day.
And while we're on that particular subject, it's, it is third, thirty days for residential, correct? If you're behind thirty days, then you're, then you're off. Is that how it works?
That is how it works out. Um, we bill a month behind, so that's where the thirty days comes in. So we bill middle of the month, middle of the month. It's due the seventeenth. And then current, our current timeline is usually around the twenty-third, twenty-fourth of the month. Because that was historically when the, the shut-off date was. That is when we tag. Um, and then the following Monday after that, we will start shut-offs. Uh, we'll do shut-offs Monday through Wednesday. We, we don't shut off on Fridays.
Last question that kind of go, goes along with that, how do you identify if there is, uh, an account that has gone on longer and hasn't gotten shut off? Is, are you identified by an alert in the software? Are you identified by a report? How do you, how do you identify that if something was missed and went four or five months and then somebody came in and, and tried to get, turn it back on or reactivate it or whatnot?
Right, so we did have that issue at one point, um, where there were people going a couple of months before they were making it onto the actual shut-off list where staff were able to get to them. Um, we now run the report, we run a report to do tagging and then we run the same report minus the payments that have come in, obviously, since tagging. So that we have a true list of people that have a delinquent balance, um, as of our turn-off date. So we are able to run a report that tells us everybody that is overdue. Um, anybody that owes more than four dollars and ninety-nine cents, um, that is what the report will pull. And then that is what we use to go out. Um, so we really shouldn't have, unless, you know, a work order just happens to get missed. We shouldn't really have anybody that doesn't get shut off. Um, businesses we work with a little bit, depending on the situation, but.
Good answers. Thanks for providing that information. Anybody else have any questions? I didn't mean to ask all the questions in a row. Nobody? Any objections to moving that one forward to the next council meeting? Nope. Well, I think that does it for the, uh, the work session. Unless anybody has anything else they wanna add? I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by aye. All opposed? All right, we are adjourned from work session. Thank you all for coming.